I call the order of the meeting in the public crime court of commissioners. When everyone rise to the floor to prepare all my pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the free and honest, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The public comment portion of our meetings provides residents and taxpayers of Butler County a reasonable opportunity to comment on matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are amending before the Board prior to taking official action. Presentations must be limited to three minutes. The Chairman has asked me to remind everyone that no personal attacks on the character or reputation of county employees, department heads, or any official will be tolerated. Any speaker doing so may be ruled out of order by the Chair. I'll call the names to the order that they appear on the sign-up sheet, and when you come to the podium, please state your name and municipality of residence. James Eckstein.
James Eckstein, Butler Township. My speech today was about Butler County Housing and Redevelopment Authority. First, I would like to take it back to November 1998. Travel Gate of the Butler County Housing Authority filed a Valley News dispatch. Butler's housing authorities had a larger travel budget than Allegheny County's housing authority. Allegheny County is eight times larger than Butler County. Forty-two percent of the travel expenses were taken by Perry O'Malley, the director then and now. If frequent travel with authority board members, where did they go, you say? Hilton Head, South Carolina; Palm Springs, Florida; Monterey, California; and Reno, Nevada. All resort destinations and all approved by the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority. The only agency in the county that surpasses O'Malley's travel was Jack Coan's Butler County Tourism, where he traveled to China and France to attract tourists to Butler County. Maybe they're having a contest or something. What was unique about the Housing Authority and its board in '98 and their latest debacle? Two of the board members are exactly the same people, Margaret Colson and Armao Maori. Wow, fifteen years later, still the same friends and family on the board for oversight. Colson's quote in '98, "I don't feel travel was out of line. I find it extremely worthwhile." Really? Butler County's travel budget, larger than Allegheny County, which is eight times bigger? And now fast forward to 2015. Jerry Andre, Kernberry Township manager, is on the board with the two Travel Gate specialists, Colson and Maori. A whistleblower goes to the authority solicitor, and they have a two-and-a-half-hour meeting. "Oh, no, we might have a problem. What do we do? Let's have two or three closed-door executive sessions to cover our tracks." Solution: Jerry Andre, let's hire my good friend and former employee, John Tran Jr., to serve as acting director, and hire a law firm associated with Tran to investigate the authority. Great, now let's have a public meeting to ratify all the decisions we made in private meetings with no explanation to the press. That doesn't sound like open honest government to me. So yesterday, I sent certified letters to the State Auditor General's office headed by Eugene D. Pasquel and the Federal Office of Inspector General for the federal government. I have no confidence in the Butler Housing Authority's internal investigations into allegations of infopridey then or now. None. The truth will set you free, and we owe it to the truths of the taxpayers. Thank you very much, Commissioner Jim Eckstein.
I'd like to respond to your statement, Mr. Eckstein. I'm saying this: The opinions and statements expressed by Commissioner Eckstein are his alone and do not reflect the opinions or policies of the county of Butler. The county of Butler is not responsible for the accuracy of any of the information supplied by Commissioner Eckstein. Any views or opinions presented by Commissioner Eckstein's statements are his alone and do not represent those of the county of Butler. Employees and officials of the county of Butler are expressly required not to make mandatory statements and not to disclose confidential information. Any such communication is contrary to county policy and outside the scope of his official duties. The county will not accept any liability in respect of any such statement, and Commissioner Eckstein will be first and liable for any damage or other liability arising therefrom. Next.
Peggy Ebersole.
Good morning, Peggy Ebersole, Millsex Township. The Board of Commissioners recently approved the Parks and Recreation Shelter Rites for 2015. On Friday, February 27th, this room, located on the first floor of the Government Center, will open at 7:30 in the morning for Parks and Recreation to take your Allegheny Park shelter reservations. The shelters make nice places for family reunions, birthdays, picnics, baby showers, and even weddings. The taking of the reservations means spring is around the corner. Last public meeting, I spoke about the Volunteer Firefighters Initiative and the Board of Commissioners' contribution of approximately 130,000 solid shield funds for an educational fire training trailer for the initiative. State legislatures across Pennsylvania realized the volunteer shortage and introduced three Senate bills in an effort to address the shortage of volunteer fire and emergency responders and encourage recruitment. I will briefly summarize those proposals. Senate Bill 25 is proposed legislation to expand the tuition waiver program to include surviving spouses of deceased firefighters, emergency medical services personnel, state parole agents, and county probation parole officers. Senate Bill 26 is proposed legislation trying to establish a tuition credit for eligible volunteers, including their dependent children and spouse. Each volunteer is eligible to receive tuition credit of up to $600 per year, not to exceed a maximum of $2,400 over a four-year service period. And Senate Bill 27 proposed legislation establishes an educational assistance and loan forgiveness program for volunteer emergency service personnel. While the proposed legislation is not a total solution for the volunteer shortage of emergency responders, it will certainly promote discussion. Thank you. Peggy Ebersole, Millsex Township.
Mark Koenig.
Good morning, Messrs. I didn't get done rotting. Commissioner Eckstein can talk a little bit. The increase for CYS for the two attorneys is 27%. I know you got to vote for that, and I know you got to approve it, but I wish it to be a little bit less than 27%. It seems like a big number for one. Friday morning, I was here. No one else was. Well, Commissioner, I ran into Commissioner McCary in a hallway. I was here for a salary board meeting, and it didn't happen, and I was disappointed that it didn't. I was told it was going to be almost a $200,000 a year savings, which that really got my attention. I thought that was going to be great. Now, I realize some of these positions aren't being filled, so it's not really going to be that much of a savings, but still. I mean, Ben Holland showed me his, and it was probably a $45,000 a year savings from his office. He was able to combine a few positions and move a few things around, and he went a few part-timers instead of full timers. And I thought that was great. Now, I know much Commissioner McCary, we had a problem with the workman's comp person he wanted to eliminate and shift the duties over, and I guess that didn't work out the way he would like it, or actually, I would like it either. So I'm past this before. I'm hopeful we can do something there. It's an awful lot of money we could save. You know, I was told one of the hardest things was we were given a year between 20 and 25 percent raises to a few employees. Those are big numbers, too. Now, I don't know what they did to justify that, if there is, but I don't know. I'm hopeful we can do something there, I really am. Thank you, guys.
Anyone else?
I'd like to respond to Mark there, please. And I'd like to tell you this: We round robin. Fortunately for us, we did round robin. We saved at least $40,000 at Ben Holland's office. I appreciate, he came up with the proposal, and I stated that I thought these two gentlemen beside me were trying to put in their proposal as leverage against his actual savings. But they can tell you about that. The good thing is, it was round robin after the meeting, and it was approved, okay? All four of us approved. A critical change: Deb Puth was retiring, and he wanted to make some transitions. He went from a full-time to a part-time person, and I applaud him for that. I don't know what the problem was. I thought, but the savings did, they did mature, you know, come fruition. So that is a good thing.
How about you, the three offices?
No, they didn't get raised. Well, that's okay. That's okay. It's my two minutes. You know, the other three people did not get the raise, okay? The other people did not. We got the savings, we didn't get the increase those two wanted, okay?
I'll respond to what Commissioner Eckstein said. We did not do everything in the Controller's Office. It was originally proposed, we moved somebody new into the First Deputy's Office at a decrease of about $3 an hour, and we also put a time limit on part-time positions he wanted to create, which was not originally. So we did not save near.
Two part-times.
We did not save, that was not in there. We did not save near the amount of money that was originally proposed. Anyone else?
Wait a minute, I'd like to respond to that. You know, this really baffles me. You put a time limit on, he wanted a part-time position, and you only gave him the part-time. You wanted to go from full-time to part-time, and you saved the county money by only allowing him to do that part-time position on a temporary basis.
Well, that is not true.
Well, that's what you just said.
No.
You know, well, he saved, no matter what, the public has to know this. He saved immediate at least $40,000.
No, he did not.
Immediate. Well, you know, he's got to prove. I'm glad he'll be able to come down here and do it, he's not here in the audience today.
Well, that's a salary board issue anyhow. We shouldn't even be discussing that here, but since it's been brought up, he did not save anywhere near $40,000. His chief deputy retired, and he had, and we put a time limit on the amount of time she could work to train somebody else to take her place, like we do for everybody else, like we did for Carmine and other people who have retired. We put a time limit on the amount of time that they could work on. That's what we did in that case. Okay, anyone else?
That's all for public comment.
We have minutes from January 26th and January 28th, and our motion to approve those minutes.
Second? I will second them. Those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries.
We have no proclamations and certificates this morning, gentlemen. Under old business, we have an item tabled from the January 28th, 2015 public meeting. It is approval of new contracts with Guardians Ad Lightum, Sue Loeb, and Lon Thomas.
Would you read the motion that was made?
Yes, the motion was to approve the new contracts. It was made by Commissioner Pinkerton and seconded by Chairman McCary.
Is there discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss on this. First of all, I'd like to say this: I'd like to ask Charlie some questions, but I'd like Dale to consider, while he's listening to this, to abstain. You know, your secretary's husband is in one of these contracts, and you've stated in the paper that you don't think there's any conflict of interest. I want you to really think about that before you make your vote, because nobody in the public is going to believe that's not a conflict of interest, okay? So, but anyway, Mr. Johns, when you originally put up this proposal, I want to explain something here to the public. Here's my question to you: Did you know about the double billing problem before you came and asked for this raise? Did you know about the problem of one of the subcontractors billing for services that the other one was not?
This task was given to me whenever I took this appointment, so I was not involved in the process of creating the contract.
So you did know about the problem, or?
No, I'm saying that I was not involved in the creation of the contract. So I don't, I was not involved in that.
Well, basically, this memorandum you sent me does not explain to the public, this isn't really a 27% increase. I mean, basically, it says nowhere in here, we're trying to correct an injustice. Is that correct on this memorandum? I got no information from you that it said we were trying to address in this memorandum that we haven't given them a pay increase since '94.
So I'm trying to figure out the question.
The question is, do you know, are you trying to just give these people a 27% increase? Or are you trying to correct an injustice that wants the listener for Guardian and Lightum was getting more money than another?
The task that I was given was to bring this contract before the Board for their consideration.
So you didn't know, you know, explain to me why the amount of randoms were not right, because you didn't know that you were trying to solve this injustice?
No, I was given a task, and that was it.
Well, luckily for me, luckily for me, I had a meeting with Tom Holman yesterday. He's the, just so the public knows, he's the liaison between the courts and the county commissions. And basically, he came and spent time with me, and was very generous and explained the situation to me. This has been an ongoing problem. The one of the two Guardians of Lightum, they divide these, the job of representing the children that are in court cases in the county, they're divided between two attorneys. One attorney, since six years ago, has been getting, billing the county for extra services for orphan support. Well, it, this is really the good thing about this. I stated at the last meeting that I felt that Sue Loeb was being discriminated against. Well, apparently, Tom Holman, not apparently, Tom Holman told me that Sue Loeb voluntarily felt that she was making enough money, and she didn't charge the extra money on purpose. She was satisfied of representing the, from the kids, from the contracts she received 10 years ago, and didn't want to overcharge the county, so she voluntarily accepted the other rate that she was given from 10 years ago. I'd like to thank Sue Loeb for that, for doing that. That's very generous, and it shows, you know, that she really cares about the county and children. I think that's outstanding. Now, this was just misrepresentative of the public. We're trying to correct this inequity. So in a sense, I knew nothing about this. When this came up, it states right here, it states right in this statement, Charlie, and you're new to the job, and I'll give you that. You know, I don't want you to think that you're new to the job, it says right here, these jobs have not received a rate increase since '94. Well, I knew right away that was wrong, because Peggy used to do the job for $35 an hour, so I knew that was wrong. It was a misstatement. '99, they went up to $50 an hour, and I mean, it says, "These positions have not received a rate increase since '94." Well, that's not true. They did get a $50 increase in '99, and 2011, they got an increase to $60 an hour. So that wasn't true. It may seem like the whole problem was the rate increase. It was to solve this problem of, a double billing problem. That, and we finally, after six years, I'm not sure what took the problem, but Tom Holman fixed the situation, so I just want to tell the public, there was two different positions, or two different duties these, they were doing. One was Guardian and Lightum, and one's for orphan support, and now, basically, this isn't a 27% increase. It is an increase for Sue Loeb, who hasn't gotten an increase in 10 years, but it's a decrease for the other attorney that was charging for orphan support. Okay, so I just want to make the public aware of that. You know, it was, you know, there was a mistake made, and when mistakes are made, I think we ought to tell the public there was a mistake made. Tom Holman thoroughly explained it to me. We rectified the problem, and I'm very happy that it was Sue Loeb's generosity. Thank you.
Those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. May I have the excuse for attending other meetings?
Sure.
Under new business, under the District Attorney's Office, the District Attorney is seeking your approval to renew the maintenance and service agreement with the Pennsylvania District Attorney's Institute's Savin Automated Victim Notification System at a fee of $6,199 and incentive with authorization for the Chairman and Chief of Labor to sign. This is the system that notifies victims and witnesses of individuals when they are released from prison or other incarceration.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries.
Under facilities and operations, John Campbell.
Good morning, John.
Good morning. Today, I'll be asking for approval for renewal for the existing service agreement between Emerson Power for the UPS and the security system of the prison with the authorization for the Chairman to sign. The term of agreement is five years, March 31st, 2015 through March 30th, 2020, with an annual cost of $8,351.75 for a total of $16,758.75.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Thanks, John.
Next, under assessment, Chris Savage.
Today, I'm here to ask for approval for renewal of agreements. First property is up in Silver Rock Borough. Property is owned by Presbyterian Senior Housing, a theater to low-income residents, low-income. We have been in a little agreement with the East Creek, with this company, Presbyterian Senior Housing, and discussing to authorize this assignment. The second one is in Butler area, Butler area School District, Butler Township, is Presbyterian Senior Housing, this is a park unit, and also need approval on this, renewal agreement.
Can we do this one motion?
You might as well do them as two, because they're two separate motions.
All right, is there a motion to approve the first item?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? I'll second. Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. You have a second item in the public school district, is there one to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Do you have any questions for Chris, Tyler, or Tom?
No, thank you.
Well, Chris, I'd just like to say, thanks for negotiating this, and I'd like the public to know how important this is to us. Of course, I only speak for myself. Mr. McCary told me this, so I'll let them speak for theirselves, as if anybody didn't know that when they hear me speak. But anyway, I'd like to say this: The Presbyterian Church here, or the Senior Housing, sorry, Presbyterian Senior Housing, which is affiliated with the senior church. Anyway, I'm biased, because I'm a Presbyterian, but anyway, and was raised Presbyterian, but I really appreciate what they do for low-income seniors and the disadvantaged. This is, they came up with a compromise here to pay us some taxes. In real terms, they could have won a court case, we believe that, of not giving the school districts, and not giving the county, and not giving the municipality any tax money. They chose not to do that, and I really think this is terrific. Chris worked out an agreement, and they're paying some taxes, and I think that really shows good community stewardship, and I'd like to thank the Presbyterian Senior Housing for doing that. That's really.
Is there a note, Mike Knapp? The old council team did a lot of work on that.
Oh, that's Mike Knapp, okay. I know Mike. I'll have to, maybe you can write him a thank you letter, okay? Thank you very much, Chris.
Under the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission is seeking for approval of the following new appointments to the Planning Commission. Jesse Hines of Silver Rock for a term expiring January 1st, 2019, and Tom Cammer of Butler, also for a term expiring January 1st, 2019. We ask your approval.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries.
Under Human Services Children and Youth Agency, Ann Brown.
Good morning, Ms. Anderson. First two items we have are paternity due no probation contracts. First is a contract with Cafeteries, Counseling, Adoption Services for foster care at a rate of $24. Ask for approval of that contract.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries.
Next, ask for approval of a contract amendment with outside of the three services, case A, travel time, transportation services, and drug screening. Ask for approval of that amendment.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries.
Next, ask for approval on the three items all related to the PCCD grants that we receive for communities to care. The first is the acceptance of the grant award in the amount of $15,528. This was, the grant application was approved at the September 24 public meeting, so now we're asking for approval to accept the grant. Your approval of that amendment?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries.
In conjunction with this grant, we need to have a pass-through contract agreement between the Commissioners and the Human Services Department to administer this grant. Ask for approval of that pass-through contract.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? No. The motion carries.
And the third request is your approval of a contract with the lines for nonprofit resources to administer this grant in the amount of $15,528. Ask for approval of that contract.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries.
Then ask for approval of a contract with our Human Services for behavioral support and individual therapy.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ann.
Next, under Human Services Area Agency on Aging, Beth Harold. Good morning, Commissioner.
Beth.
I have five things today. It's a busy day for aging. The first thing is, we are requesting the Board's approval for a contract agreement between the Butler County Area Agency on Aging and the Butler YMCA to provide health and wellness and fitness classes, supplies, and sponsored memberships to individuals over the age of 16 in Butler County. This agreement shall be in effect from February 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2015. The cost will be $10,000, and the money is from the PA Department of Aging Block Grant Funds. No county money will be involved.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And that $10,000 is a maximum, correct?
Yes, exactly.
Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you. The second item we are requesting the Board's approval on is an amendment to the agreement between the Butler County Area Agency on Aging and the Nonprofit Development Corporation Incorporated for home support services to all three zones in the county. The cost of Zone 1, $1,872; Zone 2 and 3, $1,884, which are current rates that we're paying our current providers and is effective January 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2015. This money is from the PA Department of Aging Block Grant Funds, and no county money will be involved.
Is there a motion to accept this?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries.
The third item we're requesting the Board's approval on is the agreement between the Butler County Area Agency on Aging and the Nonprofit Development Corporation Incorporated for environmental modifications. This agreement shall be in effect January 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2015. The expenses incurred shall not exceed $125,000. The money for this agreement will come from the PA Department of Aging Block Grant Funds. No county money will be involved, and this is for the ramps, storm door replacements, any home improvement that they may need to help anyone stay in their homes.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that. I'm just going to ask you, I want you to explain that, you just did. Okay, that's great, though.
Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries.
It would also be for sidewalk repairs also.
Oh, okay.
The fourth item we're requesting for the Board's approval is to amend our two environmental modification agreements to include the minor home repair and home maintenance due to the new regulations from the PA Department of Aging effective January 1st, 2015, and our two providers are Valley Care Associates and the Nonprofit Development Corporation. And again, those are for things such as sidewalk repairs, new steps going into a house, letting a handrail, new storm doors, new locks on your doors, plumbing issues, furnace issues, anything like that to enable individuals to stay in their home.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries.
And the last item is, we're requesting the Board's approval to advertise for a request for proposal for medical equipment and supplies. That contract is not going out for bids for approximately five years.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Beth, I really appreciate this, too. You know, that happens senior sidewalks. You can be in the house, and a tree or some canopy, you can do sidewalks, and you have to be cut.
Right.
If you don't have the money, they're going to drive you out of your house, so I think that's terrific. That happens on a lot of streets where it heats the sidewalks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, under Human Services and Community Action and Development, Janine Kennedy.
Good morning, Commissioner. We are requesting approval for the inter-legal contract with Center for Community Resources for provisional services through the 2015 Community Services Block Grant Discretionary Funding in Lawrence County Community Action, the Veterans Employment Program. The employment program will be operated in conjunction with the already existing support services for veteran families, known as SSBF. The term of the contract is January 1st through September 30th, 2015, and the amount is $20,000. We ask your approval.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
We're requesting approval to enter into a contract with Nonprofit Development Corporation for provisional services through their workforce training program. The term of the contract is January 1st through December 31st, 2015, and the amount is $100,000. Funding is from the 2015 Community Services Block Grant Discretionary Muddies from the PA Department of Community and Economic Development. We ask your approval.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Last item I have is a report on the BART bus salvage sale. If you remember, we have an old bus that was wrecked, and they're trying to sell it for salvage at this point. We did a bid request, and we posted, they also mailed that to six salvage dealers in the county. Bits were due last Friday, and we did not receive any in time demand, and we actually received one Monday warning, so that bid will have to be rejected. And now, we are at the point, I believe, where we're going to be asked the approval of a resolution.
Yes. Commissioners, your action today will be adoption of Resolution 2015-02, authorizing the salvage sale of BART bus number four to MRC Scrap Metals of Butler at $7 per 100 pounds, and they were the low quote.
High quote.
Sorry, high quote.
They were high scrap loads.
Okay.
They're transporting it?
We are, we're transporting it.
We're transporting it? Okay.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Permission to be discussed?
Yes. Anybody have any questions for Janine? Thank you.
Under Commissioners, we're asking your approval of a letter of agreement with Lamar Dusel for auditing services for 2015 through 2019. This represents a reduction in the current, the letter agreement we have with them due